Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're in the Eldon F. Marrow Board of Selectmen meeting room. The time is six thirty P. M. Before we stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. At this time, if you can stand, I'd ask you to stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I wrap.
Good evening, everyone. We always said the troubled kids sat in the back of the class. So with that in mind, or I should say, the kid's causing trouble, probably a better way to say. At six thirty, first item on the agenda is a vote to approve change of manager request for Jesse's Liquors located at three eighty-seven West Center Street. We have the application in front of us. And I assume...
Yeah, do you want me to come up, or?
You can go from there. It's fine.
Yeah, so this is just on that border, represent Mogi L. L. C. This is a change of managers, as you said, from Mogi L. L. C., which does business of Jesse's, along with his Kendra Patel. Ms. Patel's the new proposed licensed manager. She's been in the liquor industry since two thousand and eighteen, so has the experience. She's alcohol tip certified. Otherwise, no change to the operation of the business, no change to the ownership. So just a new manager coming in, a very well called by one of them.
So we have one sort of standard question we ask, and then obviously others if people choose. But it's just, do you have any questions about the, about the, about liquor law, or how we handle things in town, everything else?
No, I think we're good. I've been before the town before, so I've explained that to them. They're well experienced.
Okay, because part of that is, you know, we're, we pretty much have set penalties as things move forward with, with basically no exceptions, so.
Yeah, so they'll have an, they'll have, they'll have everybody alcohol tip certified, as she is, and they'll have a scanning machine in place as well, so should not be any adverse to age issues there.
Okay. Mike, any questions?
No questions, that's all. Need a motion? I make a motion to approve the change of manager request for Jesse's Liquor located at three seven West Center Street as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we will, we'll turn the, the meeting over, if you will, to our fire chief.
Thank you for having me. As you probably already know, Town Purchase Rave software, six months ago, about six months ago, so it took about four months to set up, all the training and, you know, user end stuff. We are ready to go live, and we are ready to build out our audience for, in case of emergency. So if we get hit with a blizzard, flooding, issues with roadway closures, or any type of catastrophe of that nature, we can use this software to reach our audience throughout town and let them know and let them be safe and informed by using the software that can be either sent out by email, text, or phone call. As you send it out, you click what you want to send it out as, and the parameters where it goes to. In this case, would be anybody and everybody who signed up. So it is ready to go. Speaking with David Gagnon, our town administrator, he thought it would be best to send it out with the F. Y. twenty-five tax bill, along with posting it in our town building, so everybody who comes in and visits can use the Q. R. code and within forty-five seconds be signed up for these messages. And like I said, we're ready to go. So if we have people signed up within the week, they'll get messages if we send it out. It's ready to go.
I signed up only out of the desire to test the Q. R. code.
I'll sign up later.
But thank you for this, and thank you. This comes as part of a bigger piece. We have a communication committee out there. Two things came out of the communication committee. One was this, two was a renovation, an update of our existing website, which is progressing, but slower, as we knew it would be, so. But it's great to get this out before the, the fun season comes.
Yep. Hopefully, we don't have to use it, but, you know, there will be a day where we have to. And at the end of the day, anybody who received these messages is going to be safer and very well informed what to do or prepare for whatever event happens.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, signed up, took seconds, you know, not, not hard, very straightforward, encourage everybody to do it, become our primary method. Well, we don't have one right now, right, which is, which is why this is great to get going. Become our primary method to, you know, communicate some things that have happened in the last year. It would have been nice to have, so.
I absolutely love this. Do you have a way of monitoring, keeping track as many people have signed up already?
No, so as you sign up, it's completely, we don't know who signs up. We just give them the opportunity to do it, because it's completely voluntary. In, in their, inner-town communications can be done, and that is more user-based, where we can see who our contacts are within the town of West Bridgewater as, like, employees. But as a citizen, it's completely voluntary, and whoever has signed up in the cachet will receive a message.
But, but we have no way of knowing who's signed up and how many people are signed up, so we're not, we're not retaining any of that information?
No, sir.
No, and this, the app as well, from signing up, you have some choices in there to be made. But one of the choices, too, is to, you know, allow, allow it to follow you as you go through different towns and things like that, and along these lines. Company's called Rave. It's Motorola in the backend.
Correct.
But they will, you'll also get alerts if you're in another town and something happens, so. Not every town uses Rave, so it's not a guarantee-type thing, but Townset will. It'd be a great way to...
There's a few towns in Plymouth County that switched over to Rave in the last six to twelve months.
So, yeah.
Awesome. Nice work. Everybody involved.
So do we need a vote on, on the, probably wouldn't be a bad idea, right?
It's not a bad idea. I really, I asked the chief, because he's done such a really good job, and Jeff, you did a really good job spearheading as part of the communications domain. But I asked the chief to be here so we can, he has firsthand knowledge of everything that he's been doing, in case you had any questions. But the, but the real spirit of it is, is that, as the chief said, we want to make sure that we do it as an enclosures part of the tax bill going forward in the month of January. So if you want to take a vote, or at least state that you're okay with it, there's a little bit of an expense, so we'll do it. The other is, is that I would like to also be able to pass this out, and whenever residents come into the town clerk's office, to be able to buy transportation stickers. So it's official communication from the, from the town. Either take a vote, or just state that it's okay, and then we'll move forward with it.
Okay.
Take a vote.
Yeah, you want to make a motion?
Just, just, just give me a vote. Give me a yea, your name. Vote as a yea.
Same here.
Yay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
See you next week.
Super. All right, on to warrants, Board of Selectmen business. First is a vote on police appointments. The promotion of Sergeant Jonathan Craven to lieutenant. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So...
You got to answer some questions.
What's that?
He's had, he's had it very easy.
Oh, no, wait, wait, a lot.
I feel he would love to field some.
We thought you might want to introduce him first.
So I'll, I'll introduce John. Sergeant Craven's been with us for sixteen years. I'm also proud to say, my, he was one of the first background checks that I've done, so I can say pretty much from him, Sergeant Delly down, I've interviewed everyone that's come through the door. From the, from day one, he just, he has a go, and he's, he's not going to stop. And I would never want to be on the other end of him chasing me. Physically, maybe, but not, not in that sense. He's extremely intelligent. He's extremely, he's extremely empathetic, and a lot of the things, I think, you don't know about John is the stuff he does behind the scenes for the community. And as, as far as him growing into this role, he, he is a bona fide go-to guy. And I, and I have absolute full faith and confidence that in my absence, he will make hard decisions based on what's best for the department. So unequivocally, without hesitation, I, I support and recommend John Craven.
Wonderful.
Marcy?
I have had the pleasure of knowing John for, what, about ten years? Our kids grew up together, so I do know his work outside of being an officer, or, sorry, sergeant. And so I, I know that you deserve this, and congratulations. And we are lucky to have you.
Mike?
I, I think we're lucky to have all the police officers in, in the department. So John, happy to see that this is happening, happy to see that this promotion's happening, so I'm pretty excited. Yeah, hope you're excited, too.
You look thrilled.
And as I, you know, as I said, I think when, when Chief Nixon was being appointed, I'm not qualified to say who should be next or who shouldn't be. But to echo some of what Marcy and Mike said, I, I've seen you in the community. We've talked, you know. Again, know you, we all kind of know you because you are active in the community, you're active around sports, things like that. I know you've contributed well beyond what the job requires, and for me, that, that counts for a lot, so. I wish you, I, you know, sincerely wish you the best. I almost teased you before. But I think it's, you know, a great choice, and look forward to it, so. If there's nothing else, take a, take a motion and a vote to approve the promotion.
I make a motion to approve the employment contract for Lieutenant Craven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I'm sorry, you also have to take a vote for the promotion itself, so promote him officially to lieutenant.
I make a motion to promote Sergeant John Craven to Lieutenant John Craven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super. All right, now on to the contract. Now, contracts in front of us. I'll make a motion to approve the employment contract for Sergeant Craven. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So we, traditionally, at this point, we pause, take a, you know, call for recess, take a couple of quick pictures, and then, and then we'll get back in. So again, a motion to recess for a few minutes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sir, I make, we are going to be doing another sermon on swearing-in for the promotion in some of the swearing-in of our most recent hires.
Okay.
Tendably, we're looking at ten twenty-eight, or eleven-six, depending on the, oh, the fourth, I'm sorry. Depending on the availability of the Council on Aging. As soon as I lock that up, I'll, I'll communicate that to Mr. Gagnon.
Let me make sure, I'll leave in four.
We'll lean to the fourth if we have.
Yes. Yeah.
All right, then, you don't want to picture now? That's fine. So we'll cancel, we'll cancel recess. First act you did for Board of Selectmen was to cancel recess. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night. Thank you. Thank you for coming out and supporting him.
Thank you.
Oh, come on, you're not going to hold the door for me.
All right, we will, we'll move along on the agenda. Next up is a, a vote to award the cold storage facility contract to Ramco Survey Stakes. The cold storage facility is part of the D. P. W., just an outdoor, I don't know, cover, garage, whatever you want to call it, to keep some of our equipment out of the rain and the weather. So, any discussion? Marcy?
No, no discussion. I make a motion to award the cold storage facility contract to Ramco Survey Stakes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next is a vote to finalize the date of the special town meeting. So specifically, we'd be taking a vote to hold the special town meeting on November fourteenth at six P. M. at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, and that would be our, our first motion. I can make the motion to hold a special town meeting on November fourteenth at six P. M. at the Middle Senior High School.
Second.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Excuse me for a second. All right. Now we have a vote to, to possibly reopen the, and that's because we have to decide this piece. But I'm going to make a motion to reopen the special town meeting warrant at this time.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with the warrant open, we are going to vote to place three articles onto the warrant. The first article, I'll read it, is to nominate and elect a temporary town moderator to moderate the meeting pursuant to Article Four, Section Three of the town's general bylaws, or take any other action relative thereto. So the issue is, between everybody's calendars and everything else, this is a date that works for the majority of us, but it does not work for Jason Ross. He has a prior commitment and cannot make this, and this is a special meeting. So with that in mind, the first article would be something we call, and then we appoint somebody, most likely the, the town clerk, to be the town moderator for the meeting.
Yeah, so I've spoken to, I've spoken to the town clerk. I think she would be in the best position to be able to moderate that meeting that evening. We will have two warrant articles. She'll be well-versed on them. She's already there, and she's already done the work. So what the hope is, is that because we do not have a town moderator, by mass general law, that means the town clerk will actually open the meeting. And then her first order of business will be to read Article One, and I would ask the boards, and she will be well-versed, and she knows, and she'll be prepared, is that if somebody from a member of the board could actually nominate her to be the temporary moderator of the evening, a second would also come from the board, and then there would be a vote. Somebody from the floor can nominate somebody else, and if that's what somebody would like to do, they are free to do it. And then there would be a vote as to who it is that the meeting participants prefer. My only position is, is that because it's a such short warrant article, and she will be well-versed on it, I think would be the best flow for the town, and she's willing to accept it. But that's what I would ask.
Okay. So we can vote to put all three. These, any questions or concerns about Article?
My only concern is, is there any additional tasks that she's required as the town clerk that she'd have to do on top of this? And is that going to be a burden on her? Is she going to be able to handle both?
There will be no additional task, because Sharon Ladine, the current assistant, will actually be in her place, and she will then be the effective town clerk's. I mean, that's, again, already been worked out. And we had to do it one time before, when, when the moderator at that time unfortunately passed away that year. But yeah, so that position will be covered by the assistant town clerk.
Perfect. All right, so any other discussion on our goal?
Yeah.
Okay, moving along to Article Two. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to exercise the town right of first refusal of sixty-one A. property located at Zero Bryan Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. two-three-seven-nine. More particularly described as in a deed recorded with Plymouth County Registered Deeds in Book four-four-five-zero, page fifty-four. This parcel contains approximately twenty-three point six eight acres, and is shown on the town of West Bridgewater's assessor's map as parcel number fifty-four dash zero-five-four, or take any other action relative thereto. So this is in reference to, I believe it was our last meeting, when we, when we discussed, you know, purchasing, or the town potentially purchasing this property at town meeting. And this is, this is nothing more than the, the article written up at this point, so.
Do they have a price in mind already for the property?
Yes, it was one million, one million dollars for the twenty-three point six eight acres. There was the, so for the sixty-one A. to take place, there has to be a bid. So that's the price that an individual, a resident in town, Mr. Macy, had made that bid and came before us to present what he planned on doing to the, to the property, which was some development. So this would be an opportunity to keep some open space.
Single-family homes or affordable houses?
What's that?
Single-family homes or affordable houses?
He was looking at single-family homes. He was looking, I, I don't want to speak for him, but a, a rough summary. He was looking to develop some of it for his own family.
Yeah.
And then, and then develop an additional piece of it, and keep some, there's some farming that's taking place there as well. But again, at this time, we, we had voted...
Not that much, twenty-three acres.
Yeah, it's not that far from the center of town, has many, you know, and we don't, we don't have a sixty-one A. property popping up all the time, so.
Right.
So it would be development or no development at this point. So any other questions or concerns on, on number two? All right, so we'll move to number three. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to purchase Zero Howard Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. oh-two-three-seven-nine. More particularly described in a deed recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book four, I'm sorry, five-eight-four-zero-zero, page eighty. This parcel contains approximately seven point six acres, and is shown on the town of West Bridgewater assessor's map parcel as parcel number forty-six dash zero-one-five, or take any other action relative thereto. So this property is located somewhat across from the fire and police station, and, and somewhat behind, I, I don't know the, the physical therapy, I don't know the name of the...
Yep, so that's, that's the Kennedy Building, and then on Howard Street specifically, it's behind the old, West, Old Bridgewater Historical Society.
We have a, we have a map, right? Is that on?
We do have a map. Right there.
Yeah. Thank you, Christine. So as you can see, it's, it's somewhat, it's fairly close to the school. There might be an opportunity, you know, at some point for, for something. But again, if nothing else, it's preserving a piece of land in the center of town.
It's dry. It's beautiful property.
But yeah.
So the only thing I want to inform the board is, this property is in sixty-one A., but has not become subject to first of right of refusal at this point, because there is no purchase and sale agreement. The owner of the parcel has passed away, and part of her wishes was to see as to whether or not it potentially would not be developed in the future. So the family, in attempting to be able to carry out those wishes, is looking to sell it to the town. The price that they are willing to sell it to is for is about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Their appraisal from a private bank is almost twice that. So they're really doing the town a favor by allowing us to be able to sell it at a lower price. Procurement laws are pretty particular in, in the state of Massachusetts, so normally, we don't have any procurement laws to worry about when it's a first of right of refusal, because technically, the other person signed purchase and sale agreement is the appraisal, because you have a bona fide offer. In this case, we don't have a bona fide offer, so between now and town meeting, assuming that you're going to place this on the warrant, then what I will do is I will have legal counsel reach out to an appraisal company, and we'll have to do an appraisal on it. The appraisal, I'm sure, is going to come in at least the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but we'll go through that process in the meantime.
Any discussion on, on Article Three?
My only discussion right now is the order of the articles, because I feel as though we're going to read these accordingly at the, at the meeting. And I just feel like maybe some residents in town, since this other property is much cheaper, they'd be more inclined to purchasing this as opposed to purchasing what's currently Article Number Two. Is this, is this article, the way that it's laid out, is that set in stone?
No, it's not. I usually lay it out, and I lay it out in this case in a particular that it came in, timewise. But it is your warrant, so if you would like to switch Article and Article Three in order, you are absolutely free to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's the only recommendation I have.
What are you, I'm, I'm not sure I'm following.
Switching Article Two.
But what does that get us?
So Article Three is a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar value, and Article Two currently is, is a million dollars. And some people may want both, and some people may want just, hey, one of these parcels to be purchased. And if the opportunity to purchase the cheaper one at four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that, that might be more beneficial as opposed to saying, this one's not going to pass, or this one passed, now maybe we don't want this one. Do you know what I'm saying? So it's, it's just a matter of dollar values?
Personally, I'm okay with the order that it's already in, but I don't really have a lot of energy about that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what we gain or lose by, by flipping either one of them.
I think the fact that they are listed in the, you said, like chronologically as they came in.
That's correct.
I think that that's more appropriate.
I think we, I don't care which, Mike, I, I would, I would like to make a recommendation that we do some sort of preview, similar to what we did for town meeting, just quickly on this, and talk about the two together, you know, talk about everything before we actually move into the articles. So that, to Mike's point, people, whatever order these are in, and I, I don't mind changing, I don't. But as long as we can present what people are voting on for each one, like, make sure everybody's fully aware of what we're doing before we start, before we start the process, then it doesn't matter which one goes where. So I'm, I, it doesn't matter. If you want to, if you want to flip them, I can, I can flip them.
Yeah, it just, for the dollar value.
Okay. So Article Two will become Article Three, and Article Three will become Article Two. So at this point, I'm going to take a vote on, on each one of them. Looking for a vote to approve Article One as read.
To place on the warrant.
To place on the warrant.
Make a motion to accept Article One as presented?
Yeah, sure.
Second.
All right, that's to place on the warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so going to make a motion to place Article Two, which is currently on the screen as Article Three, to raise the sum of money for the purchase on Howard Street as presented.
Second.
And that is to be placed on the warrant, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. And then we're going to, we're going to, Article Three will be referenced to the Zero Bryan Street. That's already been read as well, and we'd be looking to place that on the warrant as Article Three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we've got to take a, a vote now to close the warrant. So entertain a motion to close the warrant.
Make a motion to close this warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, so we are rocking and rolling with the town meeting. Next on the list is, I flipped the head of page, forgive me, is a, is to review the first half calendar for two thousand and twenty-five for the Board of Selectmen and other important dates. So everything's there. The, the meeting dates work for me. The holidays always work for me. And I don't know if anybody has any other comment. I had, I had one other comment on this in general, and not that it rises to the level of anything else on here, but I would love to set a date for meet the candidates, as far out as it is, and have it be something that Annie can pass out. You know, when people pull their papers, and everybody has a lot of time. Mike, you are the, you are the one up, so I don't know if you have a date in mind?
I mean, I, it wasn't even a thought, to be honest with you. I think we have plenty of time to worry about that. I do have a wedding to go to in February and in March in Florida, so that could be looked at at a different time. That'd be great.
Well, I mean, yeah, so we've got, we've got some time, but I just don't want to get something on the books for that as well. Because we've had some issues getting people scheduled, and, yeah, just as long as we have it before January, so that people know about it, people can go from there.
I think that's really helpful, yeah.
So this is the day. We're telling you three months in advance, like, if you can make it, you know?
Exactly.
And again, all these, these dates, the meeting dates are prescribed according to your rules of regulations, so it's the first and third. We can always amend it if you need to going forward, and every once in a while during the budget season, we sometimes have to add a date. So again, the board can always have the flexibility to do that.
All right. Any other comments on the calendar? Everybody good for now?
Looks good.
Okay. All right, moving next to, the next item is just an early voting reminder. Oh, wait a minute, I jumped ahead again. All right, so approve the meeting minutes of September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. For motion?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, accept the meeting minutes for Sept. twenty, September twenty-fifth for review.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four for review?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cruisin'. All right, communication from boards, commissions, and town officials. First up is a vote to sign the warrant for the state election on November fifth. This is a warrant that comes from the Secretary of State's office, and just more of a formal process on our end. Any questions? Yeah, we'll take a motion.
Make a motion to sign the warrant for state election on November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four?
Second.
All in favor? Now, we're on to the next page. Sorry, all my notes for the town meeting were at the bottom of the other page. Made me want to flip. All right, early voting reminder. We have it in front of us from our town clerk. But basically, you can come to town hall and vote early. The period runs from Saturday, October nineteenth, through Friday, November first. Generally speaking, the times on Saturday are from, well, they vary. I would suggest you read the poster. But it is up there. There's, you know, there's plenty of time for you to get in here and vote, so.
And, and if I may, I just want to add, I just want to say thank you to the town clerk. And um, and if I may, I just wanna add, I just wanna say thank you to the town clerk's office, both Annie and to Sharon. They'll have workers as well. Personally, when this legislation came through as a part of COVID, I thought then as I do now. I think that their state is asking too much of our town clerk's office. Think about it, they are legitimately going to work two weeks in a row, every single day, just processing ballots. And everybody is gonna say, great, but remember, they're also running a town clerk's office at the exact same time. So people are gonna be coming in for other items. So again, I think it's unfair, but it is the law, they do a really nice job. And they're probably going to generate twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred early voting, uh, early votes. So those people are coming in, it could have to be serviced, so I just wanna say thank you to them and the staff, cause this is really a lot of work on their part. And um, and I always say this, if your child comes home and they get a ninety-eight on the exam, you are very happy. And if they are ninety-eight percent correct on the ballots, they fail. They have to be a hundred percent for all the obvious reasons, so it's a lot of additional stress on them, so thanks to them and their staff for what they're gonna be doing.
Absolutely.
Do they get compensated for the weekend hours that they work? I know someone under contract.
So what we, the answer, the short answer to that is yes. Um, the assistant is a member of the union, so she will be paid an hourly rate at time and a half. Um, and then the other workers, which are the part-time workers, they get compensated, whatever. And what we did as a board a couple of years ago, recognizing this problem, is that we have an escalation clause. For the town clerk, so during these heavier years, she gets paid a little bit more of a stipend. And to be fair to everybody, in the years that we do not have this, her stipend has decreased.
Town I work for, the town clerk does a genetic compensation.
You know, we, we, we want to be fair, so, so we made that, we made that decision a few years ago.
Alright, we got on early voting, alright, moving along. Uh, vote to appoint uh pole worker, uh Rosemary Hats. I've only ever called her husband and her by hats.
I think that's what I would call them as well.
Um, I first met Rosemary a long time ago, flipping burgers in the shack at the YAA. She, I think, was the last person to flip burgers in the, in the green shack. And the first person to flip it in the uh, in the new shack, so. Um, long, long list of volunteering, both for her and her husband. Um, doing some great things for the town, so I'm happy to uh, to uh make a motion to appoint Rosemary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool. Next, uh, a vote to ratify Nancy LaRosa's employment as interim secretary for the ZBA. Uh, this is just a uh, a backup fill-in role when necessary. And um, at this point, any discussion?
No.
Alright.
Make a motion to uh ratify Nancy LaRosa's employment as interim sec- secretary for the ZBA.
Second. Super, all in favor?
Aye.
Jumping ahead. Alright, along one more committee. Uh, vote to appoint Paul Everett as the alternate member to the uh Memorial and Veterans Day Veterans slash Veterans Legacy Committee.
Make a motion to appoint Paul Everett as alternate member to the Memorial and Veterans Day Veterans Legacy Committee?
Second.
Super, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, as far as correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. Um, we did receive a letter today, but um I haven't had time to fully digest it and read it, so I'd like to read it at the next meeting. Um, and, and go from there, um, but there's some great stuff in there and some kudos to the DPW. Um, so certainly worth being read, but um there's a couple of recommendations in there and I wanna, we just got it, so digest it and go from there. Um, next to be public comment period, that's you, Al?
Hi, Al.
Alright. Thanks. So uh town administrators report.
Yeah, so thank you, so first of all, the municipal buildings, we, like everybody else in town, would usually use national grid. But we all know their rate is usually the highest, so historically we've bid out our electricity rates. Last year, our contract had expired, there was no good pricing. So after a little on-twisting, we were able to get the municipal buildings onto our aggregation supply. Recognizing that was not a long-term solution because it's really not a long-term option. With that said, um, we rebid out our energy over the course of the past year and a half. Um, and you could see as to what the pricing that we were receiving. And we continued to wait, hoping the pricing would come down. Quite frankly, that spike that you see in early twenty twenty-three, a lot of that has, still has to do with what's going on. With Ukraine and Russia because there's less uh natural gas and oil being um pumped out worldwide. Uh, we've seen pricing start to come down and in the end, we were able to sign a contract. For a little bit less than the eleven, seven, six over the past couple of weeks. So it's, our new rate would be eleven, six, so it's cheaper than all the other pricing. It's cheaper than everything that national grid offers there and effective on November one. National Grid's pricing is actually gonna be over sixteen cents a kilowatt, so I think we got a pretty good price. We have historically been able to do ten-year contracts, cause we want as much price stability as possible. However, there is going to be a change according to state law in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That quite frankly is probably gonna create more expensive power going forward. Um, and so no utility company will do more than a five-year contract at this point. Because they don't reckon, they don't really know how that's gonna affect them. So with that said, um, you had voted to authorize me with both this and with municipal aggregation in the past. To be able to execute, but because it's a multi-year contract, you have to ratify it. So with the constellation, it'll be a five-year contract. Uh, the price will be about eleven, six, that'll be for all municipal buildings. That will start at the end of the year when our aggregation account um expires. And I would ask you uh for a vote of ratification.
Make a motion to ratify the uh, the Constellation Energy Agreement?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next is, is hopefully some really good news, we're trying, we do everything that we can to try to save our residents' money. We normally do that by what we do, right, we try to make more with less. When we did the aggregation, um, we really didn't know exactly how it was gonna work, we just took a chance. But you'll see in this first graph that from Q two twenty twenty-three through Q two twenty twenty-four. How much our residents and our businesses that have chose to remain on the aggregation plan, how much have they have saved? In comparison of they had stayed on the national grid plan. So just in the three months alone, earlier this year. Um, our residents saved almost four hundred thousand dollars and over that course of the period of time, it actually is one point five million. So that's a considerable savings, so I hope that people remain on it. I will tell you that for whatever reason, if they wanna switch off, all they have to do is go to our website, there's a one eight hundred number. They call it, within seconds, they switch. Um, the national grid rate right now is gonna be sixteen cents, the new aggregation rate is going to be twelve, eight. Uh, that'll be locked in for three years. So you could see what I did was that armed with, we go out to bid with five or six different suppliers. The best price that we could get was twelve, eight for aggregation, so that's why I felt really comfortable signing with Constellation at eleven, six. Because I was able to use that um, um as a negotiating tool. So I did want to just disclose, this is how much our residents and our businesses have been able to save over that period of time. So as a result, going out back to bid, um, our current aggregation agreement for the town does expire in November. Um, again, you provide me authorization to be able to negotiate and execute, but because it'll be a three-year contract, I'll ask you to ratify it. And the new aggregation rate will be twelve, eight, effective sometime late November, early December, depending on when that meet or read is on, on your particular household.
Any discussion?
Wanna make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to accept the municipal electrical aggregation agreement as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, FY snowplow rates, these are just to remain competitive, we do this on an annual basis. Uh, we secure the DPW department secures pricing from other municipalities that are adjacent to us. Because obviously that's who we're competing with for privates. So it's just an FYI, no vote is required, but I provide the backup information and um, and. There it is, um, so we authorized it, um, but again, all I did was I just took the rates that they were recommending based on, on bidding out the, um, with other towns. Um.
Did it go up the ship?
They did, they went up between five and ten dollars per.
Did, um, I know in the past, the last couple of years, we've been lucky that we haven't had much snow. But I think as a result of that, there's been a shortage of plow drivers, right, is that any better or changed or?
I definitively don't know the answer, um, but you are correct, you know, people make investments into their trucks and when they don't recoup it, sometimes they're not always gonna be.
Yeah.
Um.
We lost quite a few of them here.
Um, next is really also an FYI, this is FY twenty-five net school spending, so uh we'll go back to that, thank you. So you'll see in the lower right-hand side, our town meeting approved a little over twenty million dollars. That is the school's budget and also ancillary expenses that are allowed by state law. Um, so town meeting has approved that, the state requires um that we spend at least fifteen point nine million. Uh, and as a result, you'll see that we're about four point eight million dollars over, over about thirty percent. So what that does is that proves and justifies to the state that we are meeting our minimal requirement. To make sure that, that we're educating our students appropriately. I will point out that historically, what we've always done is that we've always approved town meeting approval numbers to the state. One, that's the way I was trained, that's what I was always done for eleven years, that's what I did, what we did at previous towns. This past year, the business officer at the school said the state is also requiring actuals from the previous year. So you'll see in the left-hand side is FY twenty-four approval. Then you will see FY twenty-five actual and you'll see FY twenty-five approval. The FY twenty-four actual is by going back and pulling everything out of their budget, so. That means that is not just the money that was allocated at town meeting, that is also going to include school choice, grants and any other funds. Because that's what was actually spent within the school department. So you'll see from our actual number for FY twenty-four is that the town spent about twenty-two point four million dollars. There was a requirement to spend fifteen, two, so it was about forty-seven percent in excess. So my guess is, is that when we move to FY twenty-five, we'll see that same delta increase as well. But the key metric is for everybody to be aware that everything that we are, what our bare minimum is, not only are we meeting, is that we're exceeding by a pheromone. Um, David Moore has been our interim building inspector, he has done a phenomenally great job. Uh, in, in consultation with him, it was going to end as his services uh last month. He has chosen to stay on through the winter until April. We had advertised for the job, we had some good candidates. But I feel like we always should be loyal to whoever it is that's currently working for us, where he's already doing the job. Uh, we save a little bit of money because he is capped at how much he can make as a retired employee. But he's doing a fantastic job, he's willing to stay on until April. Um, I would like to have continued to reward him for his services and so as a result, we re-sign the agreement, so again, it's an FYI to you.
I think that's fantastic, I think that department's running well. Cleared a lot of backlogs and, and the kind, and sort of the negativity I had heard prior. Um, has gone and it's been pretty complimentary, so um, I'm excited for that.
Yeah, good. Um, the next two is really just FYIs, the annual fundraiser through the fire department, um, I approved that. And then also, as part of our agreement with West Bridgewater Country Club, formerly Riverbend. Is that they were required to have a resident day once a year. Uh, and in the past, they had sometimes done only on a Tuesday or Wednesday when requested, they do it on a weekend, obvious reason. So they did that, um, I'm told the turnout was pretty good, they provided free lessons. Those rates that you see there are about fifty percent or a little bit more, fifty percent of discount. So again, not only are they doing a nice job and paying us and we preserved a hundred sixty-seven acres. At the same time, um, uh, they're providing a really nice service to the town as required by their contract. Um, the last item of note, not on the agenda, is that yesterday is that we received a one-day liquor license request from Black Hat Brewery. Our um policy is for them to come in fourteen days in advance and they did. The problem is Monday was a holiday, so we had to post on Friday. Um, so they came in, they dropped everything off with us yesterday, but they had already got sign off from the police department and the other signatories, so. It could not by law make the agenda because we had to post on Friday because of the open meeting law and the holiday on Monday. So with that said, um, this one-day liquor license, you'll recall that Harley Davidson did a change of ownership on that license agreement. And they're going to do on ten twenty-six, they're going to do an opening event to the town. So they would like to do this, I see no reason not to approve it, but you can't take an official vote. So I'm placing it on as an FYI to the board, as long as there is no objections, we would like to just do an internal approval on their behalf. Place it on your next agenda so you can take a follow vote. So no objections, that's.
None.
And that's my report, and the next meeting is on November sixth, um, three weeks from tonight.
Alright, anything else?
No.
Going once, going twice? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.